Thank you. Good evening. We are now going to call to order the September 8, 2022, working session of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. Our first item of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of July 14, 2022, and I still move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from Commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. This evening, we are going to do the working session a little bit differently. Because the first agenda item this evening is actually for us to receive public comment on the township's cable renewal franchise with Comcast, we will take public comment on that agenda item when we get to that. Additionally, because of the magnitude of the request that is in front of the township with respect to the text and map zoning amendments by Toll Brothers for the St. Basil's property, we are going to take public comment about that matter on that agenda item after the presentation is made, so that you have the opportunity to hear, and then we will take your comment on that following the presentation. So with that, we are going to move forward. The first agenda item, I'm going to read this. "The Board of Commissioners will now take public comment regarding the cable franchise renewal for the Township of Abington. The Township's current franchise agreement with Comcast is within the normal industry renewal window, and the Township is beginning the process of renewing the franchise agreement. This is part of the preliminary portion of franchise renewal in which the Township reviews the cable operator's past performance and identifies the Township's future cable-related community needs. As such, we invite comments from any citizens who wish to speak regarding either or both of the aforementioned subjects." We will now take public comment on this agenda item. Thank you. So do we have anyone here who wishes to speak to the Township's renewal with Comcast? Okay, anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak to this?
Ian O'Neill, you're unmuted. Ian O'Neill, you have to unmute yourself. Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
So do you, in your franchise agreements, have any ability to control the fact that we are paying outrageous sums of money and then finding that the cable company is putting ads all over our screen, in the middle of the screen, half the screen, taking up half the screen, or constantly putting some kind of flashing ad, you know, in a corner, where we have paid to see what we're watching, and yet they are trying to make more and more and more money? When we accepted the corner ad, they just kept getting bigger and bigger. Do you have the ability to negotiate that in when you do the franchise agreement? Because until people start bringing that up and making that an issue, they're going to keep doing it.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm going to ask Manager Manfredi to comment.
Typically, the content that Comcast puts on the screen is not something that we can negotiate. We can certainly bring to their attention the comments that we receive with respect to that. So we can provide that to them, but I do not believe we would be able to negotiate those out of the franchise agreement.
Well, then I would hope that maybe we could get a... Tell them that, you know, if we aren't going to get some relief from this, that we are going to notify all of the residents to... And encourage them to write the cable company first, and then, secondly, to direct you to put it in negotiations next time. It's not really content. It's about what they charge us. And they're charging, you know, you're making a contract to allow them, and you're also allowing them to charge us when they've told us that they're presenting us with movies, but they present us with movies with ads. And we're paying for movies, you know, that either don't have ads, or in some cases, we know that there are ads that come in between. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment about this agenda item?
Mr. Tovin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, what does the township, what do we get from Comcast? Like, not we, like the citizens, but like, what does Abington Township get from Comcast for allowing them to franchise? Do we, is there cash money, or, you know, like, what is it that they give us? Thank you.
Again, I'll turn to Manager Manfredi.
You know, we looked at this today while we were working on the budget, and I don't have the, I should have it etched in my mind. But the franchise, there's a franchise fee that they pay to us for operating within our rights of way. It's regulated by the federal government, so there are only certain things we can do. And that amount of money, I don't know if Ms. Herman is still on, and she has that. If not, Mike, we can certainly get you that amount of money. But...
Okay, so we're getting, they're paying, they're paying a fee. That's basically, we're collecting a fee from them?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen, you're unmuted.
Hi, I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner, and I watch a lot of the children in our community looking for things to do and places, places to ride their bikes and company and companionship. Is there any way that Comcast can have a facility for our teens? Some kind of a touchdown space where they're able to use the internet or watch movies? Just something dedicated to the young people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Something we can certainly take under advisement. We'll follow up with the manager. Grace, is there anyone else?
I'll try. Ian O'Neill, you're unmuted. Rick Bruce, you're unmuted.
Hi, Rick Bruce, 1023 Kipling Road, Riddle, Pennsylvania. I second the question of the last two comments. Anything that Comcast can do to increase our tax basis, you know, to lower, I'm sorry, somebody else in the room, and I'm having a hard time paying attention. Okay. If there's anything can be done to, for Comcast's contribution to Abington Township to lower our tax basis, obviously, that's a gain for the township. I also agree that if that's not possible, or in addition to that, if there are community improvements that Comcast can make, I agree. We would welcome those, particularly for our youth. I'm done.
Thank you. And I believe that is the end of public comment on this agenda item. So with that, we will move forward to Item B under New Business this evening. And tonight, we are going to review and discuss the request by Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company Incorporated, otherwise known as Toll Brothers, for a zoning text amendment to create the AR Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay District and a zoning map amendment to rezone certain parcels on the northeast side of Fox Chase Road as AR Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay. And I just want to remind folks who will be seeing this and who are here present this evening, there is no formal vote being taken this evening. This is so that the full board can be briefed on the scope of what's being proposed, and for you to have an opportunity to hear that and to, you know, address the board with comments or questions that you have. And before we have the presentation, I'm going to turn things over to Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, President Hecker. Thank you to everyone in the room here to hear about this and to speak on this, and to everybody on Zoom. It's been a long road since this first came up, and I find it absolutely wonderful how much the people involved care about our community and their neighborhoods and want it to be a certain way and to stay there forever. And I greatly appreciate that, and frankly, it means a lot to me as a neighbor of yours. We, the board, myself and the leadership of the board spoke, and we wanted to move around the way the agenda typically works, as Commissioner Hecker said earlier. So what we're going to do is we're going to have the Toll Brothers presentation made, so that it's not as if all of you speak, then Toll gives a presentation after that, and you may have additional questions. You can listen to what they're saying. You'll be able to hear what I'm saying right now, and then be in the best situation, the best position to make your comments and have them heard by our full board this evening, as well as by Toll. The goal is to have your voices heard. As Commissioner Hecker just said, this is not the last time that this will be, unfortunately, on your iPhone or Google Calendar. There'll be two other times that there are meetings at minimum with this, if it moves forward. And you'll have the opportunity to ask questions and have some answers between now and then with me, and also in hearing from other Commissioners and Toll Brothers. So I want to make that clear, because I had a lot of questions about that come in over the past few days. Speaking to substance, the, some of you may have listened in on the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Committee meeting of a few weeks ago, 10 days ago, whatever. Others may not have been able to attend. During that meeting, I made some comments in response to the Planning Commission meetings that had happened in August. And what I want to share with you as your Commissioner is that I stand firmly behind the public's desire not to have the side streets of Ascot and Montgomery and Gibson. I guess Montgomery's more down the end. But to not have those opened up for traffic from this potential development, to be funneling in and out of the neighborhoods on both sides there. Frankly, I believe Toll Brothers has been very receptive to that throughout, and I know that all of you put value in the representation, that they heard you over those many Zoom meetings that we had. So that's number one. Number two, as to the setbacks, I know there were comments from the Planning Commission as to maybe we don't need the setbacks, or, you know, whatever it may have been, that, how they said it, I know how much that means to all of you, and how much time you put into the communication back and forth with Toll, and again, how receptive they were to working with you on that. So I believe that this board is a board that is working with and for the residents of the township, and I believe that especially, how many of you are coming out in droves to make these points, that they will hear my plea on your behalf for us to keep that as part of the plan, as drawn up by Toll. So I know there were other comments about a walking path and this or that. My opinion on it was that Toll Brothers wasn't pushing further to be a walking path, and we'll hear more from them tonight. So I would not, speaking to those who are speaking tonight, if you want to throw anything into your comments, sure, go ahead and do so. But I don't perceive it as something that Toll is driving conversation towards saying, we need to have a walking path that's going to go along the back of all of your yards. And that's really it that I want to say as to those issues. But since I had so much commentary, calls, texts, et cetera, on that, I want not only for you all to hear that, that I've got your back on that, but I would appreciate that those from Toll Brothers here, yet again, that set of beliefs, opinions, and desires from the community. Thank you, Commissioner Hecker, and sorry for the long-winded thing there, but a lot of, a lot of time and thought has gone into all of this, and I just want to make sure that I'm doing my best to help the residents.
No, we appreciate your perspective. Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. And Manager Manfredi, I'll now turn it over to introduce whoever's giving the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. Mr. Colagreco, are you there? Will you be...
Yeah, we're ready to go whenever you turn it over to me.
Grace, do you want to give control of the screen, Mr. Colagreco?
Actually, oh, no, 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 don't do that. That's dangerous.
No, don't.
Turn it over to Ian O'Neil, Toll Brothers.
I'll be able to take over.
There you go.
You got it, Alex?
Yep. Put it up on the screen now.
Thank you, Commissioners. The last time we appeared before the group as a whole, the board as a whole, was probably two or three months ago. I lose track of these things probably a couple of months ago. And we gave the board a brief debriefing of what was going on. Since that time, we've had two appearances before the Planning Commission. We've had a unanimous recommendation to proceed as proposed by the Planning Commission. We've had, we've been for the Comprehensive Plan Committee on a few occasions, and had a successful meeting with them probably a couple of weeks ago. And here we are now back with you. And what I hope the next step will be to forward this to public hearing, because we're in need-to-know mode right now. We either have to move forward with this, or we don't move forward with it. We've been at this for about over a year and a half. We spent the better part of last year meeting with the residents and coming up with a plan that we think meets everybody's satisfaction. So I wanted to give you just a brief update as to what has been accomplished change-wise with our plan or with our amendment. And I just misspoke, and I think it's important for everybody on this call, or everybody at this meeting, to understand. We always, and I've noticed from the consultant review letters, that we're already into plan review and things that might have to change with the land development plan. We're at 35,000 feet right now. We're just trying to get an ordinance in place that allows for age-restricted housing on the St. Basil's property. Many of these comments regarding plan review will come up when we submit an engineered land development plan, if we're fortunate enough to get that far. We have done a fair amount of, as much engineering as you're going to put into a plan at this stage, I mean, we don't want to go overboard with engineering, but I don't want to represent to anybody that what they're seeing on the screen right now is the finally engineered product. We just need from this township a determination as to whether age-restricted, over-55 housing is a good use for the St. Basil's property, under the conditions set forth in the draft ordinance, which the Planning Commission has vetted, which the Comprehensive Plan Committee is taking a look at, and which we can walk through briefly right now with this presentation. So what you're looking at on the screen right now is, again, a sketch plan of what our draft ordinance would permit on the St. Basil's property. To put this all in perspective, we presented the residents, really, with an option last year, that the site is presently zoned, community serviced, and will still be zoned. That, this is just an overlay. It's another development option. There is interest in a CCR community on the property, a continuing care community with four-story buildings and a number of units. It's zoned for that. You wouldn't have to go through this process. It can do that now. And the residents, I think, were uniformly behind this proposal of age-restricted housing. We didn't get to age-restricted housing initially. Our first proposal was for non-age-restricted housing, single-family detached houses, the kind you've seen in the neighborhoods, not the exact kind of houses, of course, but the type of development you see all over Abington. But we were educated to the fact that that would present a burden to what I understand is already an overly burned school district. We were asked then if we would take a look at age-restricted housing, which is something that Toll does, does very well. And Brian Theron of Toll is on the phone call, and he can point you to a number of communities where Toll has done this. We looked at it, and we said, yeah, you can do it. The challenge of the St. Basil's site is that for age-restricted housing to be successful, you do need a certain density. The reason you need that density, quite frankly, is to support the community amenities, the clubhouse, all of the open space, and the, and you want enough density in the community such that most people that move into age-restricted housing eventually come into a fixed income situation. So you want certainty on what HOA fees are going to be. You try and drive them as low as possible to make this a viable housing option for that age category. And obviously, you need a certain minimum density to do that. If you had 120, 130 units, it wouldn't pencil out. The fees would be not attractive to those who we're looking to have live here. We've been through all that. We think we have a great relationship with the residents who have responded. Drew just identified some of the concerns that you will hear us speak to tonight, and how we've addressed them through numerous, numerous, numerous meetings with anybody who's asked to meet with us. So Alex, why don't you move on to the next slide here? I'm not even sure. There you go. That's what a typical unit would look like. They're carriage home units. Not much more to say, other than, you know, you see pods of them throughout our site plan, and that's the visual that eventually you would be looking at. Next slide, Alex. This is the plan that we presented way back when, probably last year, to give you some idea of how the density compares with the abutting communities. And we're, we have about 47 acres, and what we tried to do is compare density on 47 acres with the two abutting neighborhoods. And the neighborhood on the left here has 2.2 dwelling units per acre. The neighborhood on the right, as my eyesight is correct, I can't even read what that is, probably close to four dwelling units per acre, and word about 3.2, 3.3 dwelling units per acre. The density didn't seem to be all that much an issue, quite frankly. And I've said this, I've been practicing law on land use for 39 years. At the end of the day, I challenge anybody to drive by a community that's finished and tell you what the density is. It either looks nice, or it doesn't look nice. It either works, or it doesn't work. Nobody drives by and says, oh, my goodness, I wish that was 3.0 density rather than 3.2 density. It's just the devil's in the details and how you make it look. And we're good at that. We are very good at that. So the next slide, if I could, if I could project. This is a, this is an interesting conversation piece. The residents that we met with, we originally came in with a buffer that was probably, I don't know, 25 to 50 feet, you know, from the abutting communities. And through countless conversations with abutting communities, we bumped that up to 125 feet. Now, I want to make sure I use these terms properly. The buffer is not 125 feet. The setback is 125 feet from the property line to the first house. The ordinance would require a 40-foot planted buffer within that setback. And what we originally had proposed was that we would have 85 feet from the abutting boundary line, which would be open field, as you see here, and then we would do our planted buffer area adjacent to the carriage homes, more adjacent to the adult community. It was suggested to us that we might not want to be so draconian as to where this buffer is situated in that 125-foot area. That's a good idea. We probably shouldn't be that draconian. We should probably allow for that 40-foot planted buffer to float somewhere within that 125-foot buffer. And that's what we've done. The ordinance in front of you would allow that to be determined at land development. It does not matter to Toll whether the 40-foot buffer is right up against the boundary line, or whether it's right up against the carriage homes, or whether it's somewhere in the middle. It was brought to my attention, our attention, two weeks ago by a resident, that some of these houses in the existing community have solar panels, and they were concerned, the residents were concerned, if you plant these trees too close to the, to their existing homes, it might interfere with that, the functioning of those solar panels. As I said, it's, you have 125 feet to deal with. That's the important part. Where that planted buffer is within that 40-foot, within that 125 feet, is certainly something that we can work with the residents of the township on, should this go to land development. It's neither here nor there to us, but it is obviously important to the abutting communities, and the Planning Commission, and this board, and we will take your lead as to where you think that's best situated. So we added that flexibility into the ordinance. It's no longer a linear equation. It's an equation that can deviate anywhere within that 125-foot setback area. Next slide, Alex. Again, we keep looking at the same plan here. This is really a depiction of open space areas. We prepared this plan because there was some question as to whether we could meet the current open space criteria of the ordinance. We're not asking for any changes in the open space, how you calculate open space. What we've got in green here is the area that we have calculated as open space, which we believe is entirely appropriate under the ordinance. The area in yellow or orange, however it appears on your screen, is area that is still open space. It's just not calculated. So, you know, we wanted to set forth the two, the dichotomy here. There's a lot of open space with this job. Some of it, your ordinance allows us to count towards the requirement. Some of it, it doesn't. The yellow is the stuff that doesn't count. The green is the open space that does count. Next slide. Yeah, this is what I was referring to earlier. We're not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but this was the choice that was presented. We do have an interested development partner who would be interested in this type of use on the property. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this, because I think we heard loud and clear from the residents that they would prefer the age-restricted housing. So unless anybody wants to come back to this later, I don't want to use up any time going through this plan at this particular time. What do we got next, Alex?
That's all.
That's it. Okay, go back to the original site plan, because that's a, that's a better visual to look at than the, than the CCR community. So there we go. And there have been a number of comments made by the Planning Commission, one of which is when we add this new carriage home use to the ordinance, we didn't add a parking ratio with the carriage home use. So we added that in the ordinance. It's very consistent with what the ordinance presently allows for in other areas of the township. We're not looking to modify parking ratios completely. The other issue we had, as I just said, was the open space delineation in the trail system or the buffer system. I didn't really speak to the trail, but Drew, I think, did give a good synopsis of what that conversation is all about. Whether there's a trail or not throughout this community is not, it, it, I don't want to say it doesn't matter to Toll, because ultimately, at the end of the day, it does matter to Toll. Because if it's going to be a private trail, that's going to be a cost that gets added to the HOA. If it's going to be a public trail, which I don't think the neighborhood is enthusiastic about, but if we're going to be a public trail, then that would be a cost, obviously. We'd be looking to Abington to defray the cost of maintenance of that trail. We have left, there's nothing in this ordinance that you have in front of you which requires a trail or doesn't require a trail. It's open-ended on that issue. We've heard comments from the Planning Commission that they may prefer a trail. We've heard comments from the residents that, I don't know, I'll let the residents speak for themselves. I don't think a trail is high on their list of priorities through the community. I certainly don't think a public trail is high on their list of priorities. If it was a trail for the community and opened up only to the residents of the community, then that obviously would be fine, and we'd have to cross that out and see what kind of burden that would impose on the HOA. Again, with these types of communities, I have to emphasize the fact that affordability is an issue. And every item that gets added on to an HOA budget, in age-restricted housing, gets scrutinized, perhaps with more detail than it would with a single-family detached regular housing community. I don't want to speak much further, because I find that the best way to do these is to respond to questions. I could go on and on and talk about things that nobody cares about. But again, I wanted to emphasize the fact that we are, the only issue, I think, right now before the board is whether they think this property is suitable for this use. Critiques of our plan and all of that will come later. Land development, we've identified those areas of your ordinance, which we believe need to be modified to accommodate this plan. If there's certain traffic improvements that are necessary, that'll come during land development. We heard loud and clear after our first meeting 18 months ago, that cut-through traffic through the abutting communities was, did not work for the residents. Frankly, it didn't work for us either. The abutting communities don't have the street network. They don't have the infrastructure to handle secondary access to the community. Most developments, I will concede the fact that most developments, and it's good land planning, to have multiple access points to the subdivision. And what we've tried to do to accomplish that is, you'll see out on Fox Chase Road, we do have a boulevard entrance on the right-hand side, there you go. We do have a boulevard entrance coming into the development. And then we do have an emergency access, if you go to the left-hand side, coming out on Fox Chase Road. They are separated. So we believe we have ample means of access. So we believe we have ample means of access ingress, even for emergency vehicles, to the community coming in through Fox Chase, mostly because I think it would be, and, and again, I'm not a fire policeman. I'm not a fireman. I don't know anything about those things. But I think that would probably be the, the easiest way to access this community rather than coming in through a, one of the existing neighborhood streets. There are at least three points of access. We count that boulevard as a couple of points of access into the community. But again, there's nothing in this ordinance that addresses that. We, we just rely on the standards of land development review going forward. I really wanted to focus the conversation tonight on whether the board thinks that this use is appropriate for this site as a possibility as opposed to the other uses that will be developed here. And this site is not going to be fallow. It's not going to be open space. It's going to be redeveloped. The sisters have made that clear. We've been given a limited window of time to accomplish this or else you move on to the next, you know, you, to the next applicant, whoever that might be. So that's, that's it for me. If you have questions, we have representative, as I said, Brian Thier, and the project manager is listening. He can add to any questions you might, or answer any questions you might have, or I'll do my best. But thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Colagreco. Commissioner Rothman, is there anything you want to say before I open it up to our colleagues? Anything further I should say?
Is our plan to have those in the room speak first?
For sure.
Okay. I wanted to advocate for that so that in case they did want to go home and tune in later with a bag of chips if this keeps going, that they had that option. But, no, thank you, Lou. Please do stick around because there, I, I can tell by looking at the faces of those here that there are some questions and/or concerns. And I, I certainly want us to be able to provide them with whatever information we're able to.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. And with that, we will open this up for a public comment. And we'll start with residents who are here in the room that wish to speak to this project. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Nicole Laria, currently 680 Pembroke, building a house on the corner of Ascot and Forest Road. Would I hand it out to you where it's some pictures? If you could look at the first packet, please, the one that has the van on it. I just wanted to show you guys how small that road actually is. And it's the same for my neighbors across from St. Basil's on Gibson and on Montgomery. These roads are very small. They're very narrow. You see my van as a reference, and you also see the trashcans that are there because we all have the Abington trashcans. So you can kind of get an idea if another car were to go through, that there's really not enough room. I have a lot of concern with this. If somebody's parked on the opposite side of the street and a fire truck did need to come through, Mr. Narcoitz keeps pushing for that to be an emergency exit. If a fire truck does come through, are they going to run over my child that has autism who happens to be walking around the corner? That's what concerns me. I'm also concerned about many other things. There are many young children in our neighborhood. In our neighborhood, we teach our children to respect police officers and firefighters. They are excited to see these people coming through. Having that as an emergency exit is not a good idea. That's one of the issues that I have. Another issue, and I know once again that we're not quite at this stage yet, but I need to express my concerns now because I'm going to continue to express these concerns, is also about these paths that they plan on putting through. If this is a path that anybody can access, I don't see how that's safe for our children in the neighborhood to be inviting people to come walk right in our backyards, to place benches there. Once again, which Mr. Narcoitz has suggested, that he would like to see benches on these trails. I don't think that that's safe. I don't think it's a good idea. A lot of us are all working, middle-class people. We can't afford to just throw fences all over our properties. That's not realistic. So I really want you to take that into consideration. One last final point I have.
Sure.
And thanks to Mr. Rothman and also through a formal complaint of Mr. Kevin Van Horn. This property of St. Basil's is not being maintained. This has nothing to do with the Toll Brothers. I know they don't own it yet. But if you look and you see the grass and how high it is, it is absurd. We are inviting all these animals to come in to live there. There are foxes, there are deers, there are rodents, there are bugs. We are inviting these animals to come live in this area that's not maintained. And then when they start construction, where are all those animals going? They are going right into our backyards, and that's not a good thing either. So once again, you know, I had to actually make a formal complaint in order just to get the grass. At one point, it was higher than me. It was over five feet tall in my backyard from St. Basil's property. And that's ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to reassure both you and the other residents in the room that your commissioner, Commissioner Rothman, has done a very effective job at communicating with us the concerns that have been articulated by you and your neighbors throughout this process of meeting. And simply because there is a recommendation from an advisory group or someone who, in this case, the planner who is advisor to us, that we're under no obligation to accept those recommendations. We can do what we think is in the best interest of the township. And your commissioner is telling us what he believes is in your best interest based on his feedback from you. And that would be the road we would travel. So we hear you. Please come forward.
Thank you. My, my name's John Tracy. I live at 663 Seven Olive Avenue. I've been there for about thirty-three years. And I'd like to comment on the development of St. Basil's. I feel that 150 over 55 carriage houses put on that ground is what I would call overdevelopment. Even though the Toll Brothers call it something different, I still feel, even though they went through the other possibilities, I still think 150 houses is overdevelopment. We'll roughly have about 300 more cars coming in and out of Fox Chase Road. And the cut-through streets in Fox Chase Manor will quickly be seen as alternative routes to get to the, to Fox Chase Road for the people that live in the new community. They'll, they'll go through Old Huntington Pike and then Long Stress Street and then through Kirkwood and Seminole and, and also Roseland. And I think eventually what will happen is because those streets are so narrow is that you'll, if this does occur, you'll be, in a couple of years, everybody will be petitioning for the speed bumps. And then people will be petitioning for one-way streets. So I just think it's a lot of houses and there's going to be a lot more cars. And also, it'll clog up, it already clogged up Huntington Pike, especially around the busier times of the day. I don't know if people go down in the city and are aware of how clogged up Huntington Pike is as well as Susquehanna Road to get out up into this area here. Also, I wanted to add at the end of this in closing that I am for, if, if something does happen, I'm for the no-cut-through of the streets and I'm for the 125-foot buffer. And I'm also for the, the current proposed property not having a, a public walking path. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate it. Let's go forward.
Hi, everyone. My name is Liz Carr. I live at 723 Forest. And my property backs up onto this development. And I'm the one who brought up the solar panel issue because we have solar panels on our home, as do our neighbors. And trees had to be cut down at the back of our property to have solar panels. And then to hear the planning commission say they want the trees on the neighbor's side would be a problem for all of us with solar panels. So this has been the rendering all along, the one that we saw a little while ago from Toll Brothers that the neighbors were pretty good with. We've met so many times, and this rendering shows the trees on the Toll Brothers carriage home side. And then the planning commission comes in after all of our meetings in good faith and with goodwill with Toll Brothers, then the planning commission comes in and says, we think there should be benches back there. We think the trees should be on the back of the neighbor's yard. And it's just frustrating because we had made such great strides in a project like this. And then to find out, it's like our own planning commission is working against the interests of the tax-paying residents of Abington Township. So we appreciate you listening and your support, Drew. But we do all, kind of, everyone we've spoken to from the Fox Chase Manor side and the Forest Avenue side are really in agreement with the no-cut-throughs with 125-feet setback. And yeah, we are all on the same page. And we just wish that the planning commission would support us residents. Thank you.
Thank you for expressing your thoughts. Is there anyone else here in the room this evening that wishes to speak? Please come forward.
How you doing? My name's Ray Vandergrift. I live at 714 Kirkwood Avenue. And I've been at my place for about thirty-two years now. We border the property. And I'm going to be extremely redundant just to make a point. And you, you guys keep hearing the same thing. Drew even opened up with what our three biggest concerns are. But I'm going to say it again just for the record.
Sure.
To make sure that everybody knows it's just not a few people. It's every single neighbor that we know that borders the property on both sides of the field. We've met together. We all know each other. There's not one person that we've spoken to that borders the property on either side of the field that wants a, a walking path behind our properties. There's not one neighbor that wants the cut-through streets. There's not one neighbor that we've spoken to that, uh, what's the other thing I wanted to say? That wants the tree line closer to our properties. So for a year and a half, I've been on almost every meeting. I've spoken at almost every meeting. Everything was put to rest. We didn't want the big ugly buildings. Toll Brothers said, hey, we'll work with you. We didn't want to pay taxes for kids going to the schools in the hundred homes they were proposing before. We said, can you do carriage houses? They said, yeah, we can do carriage houses. That eliminates taxes for all the residents of Abington Township. We don't have to add on to a school. We're building another school. We said, you know, you know, can we have some space behind our property so we're not right up against you? They came up with 125 feet. They lay down in that plan that we all looked at, which still looks that way that Lou presented, 85 feet from the back of our property lines to the tree buffer, which is another 40 feet. Everybody liked it. Toll's happy. We're happy. Drew's been extremely supportive of the neighbors to help us work with Toll to reach an agreement. So that was a year and a half ago it all started. All these meetings, maybe eight, 10 meetings, I lost track. Three weeks ago, we meet the planning committee. And they decide, hey, it would be cool to have a windy trail with benches and trees. And we're gonna, we're gonna do whatever you want to do, like in, like in Etch A Sketch. And you're playing on it at home. At the end of the day, you wake up and you do a different plan tomorrow. Well, we've been working on it for a year and a half. And we're like, wait a minute. Like, we quit bothering Drew because we were all on the same page with Toll Brothers. Well, Drew's phone's been lighting up for the last three weeks. The planning committee spoke two weeks in a row. And after we all said all our comments, and they turned our mics off and we couldn't raise our hands, they said, oh, I second Kathy's motion to move the trees closer to his house. Well, who, why do they care where the 40-foot tree line is? Whoever wants to buy the Toll Brothers community is going to see the layout, know where the trees are. They can either buy it or not buy it. We're stuck where we are. We know what we want. Right now, we can see 600 yards from Forest Avenue to Kirkwood Street. And they want to push trees down our throats, which is ridiculous. So the three main topics are, we don't want cut-through streets. We don't want the trees closer to us. The first proposal that Toll showed should be the final proposal because there shouldn't be six or seven people in a planning committee deciding what an entire neighborhood wants for both sides of this project. And that's really about it. No cut-through streets, no walking trail. And, and you guys haven't heard it, but everyone else has from all of us. Albatour Park's right across the street. There's sidewalks. I saw it on the plan for all the new people in Toll Brothers. They can walk around there. They could jog a marathon in there on the sidewalks. They can jog over to Albatour. We don't want strangers hanging out behind our houses. And for all the people that aren't going to speak tonight, you know, by phone or Zoom and aren't here that I know and have spoken to in our neighborhood, they don't want it. We're all on the same page. So we're hoping that, and Drew said it, but we all want to reinforce it, that we hope that six or seven people can't just come in after a year and a half, three weeks ago and say, oh, this would be cute and fancy. We, we don't want it. That's all I want to say. Thanks for hearing me, Drew. Thanks so much for working with us. We know you're going to get us what we want.
Appreciate your comments, sir.
Nothing like, nothing like some pressure when it's not 100% of my control.
I'll just reiterate again that the planning commission is an advisory commission to the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission does not set zoning code or regulation in the township. That is, you know, that is the purview of this board. And we're here tonight to hear what you've been telling Drew all along so that as this moves forward, if it unfolds, it unfolds in a way that works for you and the residents of that area of the township. Please come forward, sir.
Hi, my name is Pierce Kerr. I'm at 723 Forest Avenue. And I'm not going to outdo Mr. Vandergrift. But I do want to, I do want to back up everything that's been said so far. You know, the, the cut-throughs on, on Ascot, Gibson, and Montgomery, they should be, they should be left off the table. It shouldn't even be considered. The walking path, there's no need for a walking path. There's plenty of places to walk. And the tree line should actually go on the development side, not on our side. We have solar panels, as my wife said. And the only other comment I have is the planning committee, I would recommend that they, they attend all the meetings before they, they make these recommendations. This, this, this is all created by them.
Understood.
Everything here, because Toll Brothers have been pretty fair. And, and I just want to reiterate what was said previously. And I appreciate your help, Drew. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Does anyone else in the, in attendance here in the room this evening wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Vince Kelly. I'm usually a man of many words, but this evening I want to just reiterate what Ray Vandergrift said and Pierce Kerr and Pierce's wife and John Tracy. The main issues for the last year and a half, we've been discussing. And unfortunately, all the commissioners haven't been involved with these conversations. We don't want the property developed. You know, I've been living at 614 Kirkwood with my wife and three kids for the last 26 years. I grew up one of 10 in a three-bedroom in Fox Chase. I moved outside the city so I could have some space. I'm the youngest of 10 children. So with that being said, a little bit of space means a lot to a guy that's one of 10. When Toll Brothers comes along and they want to develop, 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 I don't want to stop development, but we had a lot of conversations with them. And what the neighbor said is 85 feet. I realize this is going to go to a, a land development committee and, you know, there's going to be other people involved. But as our commissioners, you know, we voted for Drew to support us, and, and he has to this point. Hopefully, he'll continue to do that. We love Abington. We love our area. We want to make sure that we have open space. We don't want a trail. We don't want benches. We don't want cut-throughs. Emergency vehicles come flying down Fox Chase Road, McKinley on Cedar. Every night I hear them. That's fine with me. They, they can come through Fox Chase Road into this development with no problems with the concern for the woman that has an autistic child. So with that being said, you know, I don't know how many more times we have to have this conversation, but fortunately, it's in front of the people that make the decision. Hopefully, you guys understand what our concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I can say, we hear you clearly. And it, you know, is consistent with what Commissioner Rothman has been sharing with us throughout the process. But we appreciate you coming out and being direct and being candid. It's, it's quite helpful. Is there anyone else here in the room that wishes to speak before I turn to Zoom? Okay. Okay. Thank you. If there are folks on Zoom who wish to speak, they may do so.
Steve Borland, you're unmeted.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to encourage the commissioners to vote against the zoning text amendment for the Toll Brothers. In my view, it's an end-around of the regular zoning regulations and procedures for the township. It avoids those regulations and procedures. It's my understanding that this is a transfer of title, of deed, from the Sisters to Toll Brothers. But with this zoning amendment, the CS zoning would remain. I'm concerned about when the people who buy these properties resell their house. Does that CS zoning go with it? And is it going to be a problem for them? It could be. Second, second thing is that this project doesn't exist in a vacuum. Within a mile of this project are three other projects on the Philadelphia side of the border. For a total of, I think, by my count, about 1,200 housing units would be built. Each one of those is going to house a couple of people. All of those people are going to drive cars. So, within the next three or four years, if all of these projects go to completion, there's going to be an increase of some 3,000 people within a mile of Rockledge, within a mile, actually, of Drew's house. And all of those people are going to drive cars. The, you can imagine what the traffic is going to be like. You know, the, the traffic on Huntington Pike through Rockledge now is a parking lot. It, it, it's, it's just, it just doesn't work for me. I have been against this project since the day I first heard about it almost two years ago. And I've, I've heard nothing tonight that changes my mind. But I do have a suggestion. There is a community I know of in Bustleton, in Philadelphia, who is looking to build a school on the corner of Pine Road and Shady Lane. Now, they're going to have a problem building there. But the Sisters have a school on this property already that they're not using. Seems to me that if, if this project doesn't go forward, the Sisters could sell, rent, lease that building to this community. They're looking for a school. This is a school. It's built as a school. This is an idea where everybody could win. Right? These people get a school. The Sisters get a cash stream. The neighbors are happy. Drew is happy because if the neighbors are happy, he gets reelected. It avoids construction, traffic, noise, and the mess for four years on Fox Chase Road. Toll Brothers could then be contracted to rehab the building and bring it up to code and, and upgrade the infrastructure. There's, there's, every, everybody wins if these, if the Sisters then, if the Sisters transfer or lease this school to this community over in Bustleton. And that's, that's all I have to say about it. I am not happy about this project from the get-go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Let's bring the next resident forward.
Karen, you're unmuted.
Thank you, commissioners and Toll Brothers, for having us citizens and giving us this presentation. I, I agree with a lot of our citizens about cut-through streets. I live in Hollywood, which is the, on the other side of the development. And we have a terrible problem with traffic and people cutting through our neighborhood trying to get to the Huntington Valley Shopping Center. So, there is an area outside Hollywood Tavern that has a circle. And that's actually disastrous. It's like a circle to turn. And it really obstructs the road. It's very confusing who has the right of way. I would hope that Abington would be able to do a traffic study and perhaps do away with the circle as we're having more people in that area. Another thought I had is it might not be a bad idea to have red light cameras. We have a great deal of people lately that just run all of the lights, which is unsafe for our children and our citizens. And I do believe that the red light cameras on some of these big intersections in that area deter people from running the light and thus hurting people. A third thought I had is my dad lived in 55 and older in Newtown, and they actually had a gate on their community. And it was, you had a pass card. And that really helped deter traffic. It deterred people from driving around at a fast speed. It deterred extra traffic in our area. So, I don't know how the Toll Brothers would feel, but the gate really, really helped keep people driving around that really don't need to be in that area, don't live in those houses. It helped keep them safe. It helped keep the other neighbors have reduced traffic. So, just, please consider a gate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and suggestions. We can bring the next resident forward.
Mr. Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, hi, Mike Tobin, Kirkwood Avenue. And my property butts up right to St. DeCarnes, St. Basil's. And just to reiterate what Ray and everybody else is saying about the cut-through streets, I agree with all of that. My, my question or my request would be, just to alleviate the anxiety that everybody's having right now with the planning board and, and what have you. Is there any way that, and Drew is only one of the, you know, 10 or so commissioners that have to vote on this? Is there any way we can get a, an early vote on, you know, how the other commissioners feel or some kind of assurance that, that the cut-through streets won't be opened up? I don't think the cut, I'm not worried too much about the cut-through streets because they're only 25 feet wide and the new standard is like 35 feet or whatever. The, you couldn't even, a fire truck couldn't even get down one of those streets, even if they did open it up. But anyway, I would like to get that, is there any way we could get that just like totally finalized so that the residents in the area on both sides of Basil's don't have to worry about this? I'm not so much concerned, you know, there's other people I'm more concerned about the trees if they're at 70 feet or 85 feet. I'm not too concerned about that. But as far as the, the buffer itself, again, I don't understand why the planning commission has an issue with the size of the buffer. It's none of their business. And I also don't want the side streets open up. Is there any way we can get a confirmation from all the commissioners that they will not mess with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. We have to follow process and protocol, but I want to be clear. We have heard consistently and unanimously tonight from those who chose to attend this evening's meetings about what the concerns are. We've heard from the commissioner who's representing the ward that he supports the concerns of the neighbors and that they have, they had a tentative plan worked out with Toll Brothers about what would be in this and what wouldn't be in this. And I can appreciate and respect the concern and surprise that folks have expressed here tonight about what the recommendations were from the planning commission. And I will reiterate again that the planning commission is advisory to the Board of Commissioners. We have the ability to adopt in whole, part, or none, any recommendations that come forward. And given what the community has voiced this evening, I don't see why anybody on this board would be recommending something other than what the commissioner of the ward is advocating for based on his interactions with his residents. That's how representative government works, and that's how we can, that's how we intend to follow on, on course with this moving forward. You all have been very, you've been very clear this evening, and we appreciate that clarity.
President Hager, may I add one more very quick thing?
Very quick.
Extremely quick. The, I, a lot of respect for the planning commission, but the planning, the way the planning commission functions is, once they make their recommendations to us, that's it. They, they basically don't really have a dog in this fight anymore. They've given their opinions. They won't be coming before us trying to continue to advocate for these things that obviously Commissioner Rothman and all of his residents are against. So, it's not like they're going to be coming and pushing for this. Just wanted to make sure people understand that. Thank you, President Hager.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bigman.
Mr. Bruce, you're unmuted.
First of all, I want to compliment everyone for their comments that, no, it's still on and echoing, and I cannot think. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is that I heard from the gentleman that had a proposal about using it a school use. I think that's an interesting idea. I don't believe that Toll is going to recognize enough of the profit to make that happen. And I believe we're far enough down the road that it would be naive for us to assume that Toll would necessarily go that route. But it is not a bad idea. Now, I do want to get to the point. I live at 1023 Kipling Road, so I'm on the Crosswalk side. First off, let's talk about the cut-through roads like Ascot. We'll use Ascot as an example. The owner of the property with the autistic child that is right on the corner of Ascot has spoken very clearly, has some suggestions. At the time that these communities were developed, back in the late '40s, you know, I think they had kind of left that open because they weren't sure what they were going to do with those. So, they left it kind of as a, you know, a stub road, if you would. At this point, we need more than just a stub road. We need to have not gates, but if there's no, if the, and I agree, if the, if the width, and that's something for the, the Abington Emergency Response Unit to figure out. If the width and access of these stub roads, like Ascot as an example, is not enough to fit their equipment safely down it and not harm the residents who live on either side, then we should stop, we should completely eliminate those stub roads, either by taking out the pavement and making that into common open space and giving half of it to either side of the, of the property owners, or simply making it dead space. But completely gate that, not gated, but I mean completely block it, not what we currently have. It should be an absolute barrier that is erected there, either a natural barrier, which would be preferred, or a mechanical barrier that is not to be opened at any point. That's number one. Number two, the idea of flexible space, the gentleman from Toll who kept talking about draconian measures and so on, the point was, he was trying to bring out that, you know, the line between the tree line and the buffer line is really to combine the two and do the math, it was about 120 feet if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, something to think about here. As a scientist, I want to say that you need to bring in, and I'm sure you will, you need to bring in a environmental engineer, and I emphasize environmental engineer, who will look at this space not as, not as a path, not as a walking space. And the other gentleman who pointed out that right around the corner is Albatour Park is exactly right. So, this should not, the neighbors that line that street have two concerns. They have a concern about their, some of them have solar investments, and all of them have security risks. And I understand that 100%. I also heard the item about, you know, that space getting kind of uncontrolled and high and all that stuff. A properly managed example of what open space should look like is available at the Penny Pack Environmental Restoration Trust, which is, if you look up the P E R T, which we are heavy supporters of, that kind of expertise can be employed, employed back there. You can make the space into a non-human space that manages itself. That's what's needed. What you've got right now is an open field that's kind of in a conversion between trying to be used as a park, trying to be used as getting ready for a, a building arrangement, and so on. That's not what you need. And putting in trees is the last thing you want to do. What, what's needed is to have a proper environmental assessment of that area to say, okay, this is going to become a open space that is exactly that, an open space, not for humans, but for green, normal nature that is not disturbed. If it is properly planned and executed over a process of about, of about eight to 10 years, it will become a balanced, self-maintaining, low-cost space that will take care of itself environmentally, as well as terms of drainage and in terms of its own wildlife management at a much lower cost than if you come in there and try to landscape. Number two, if you put in trees, yeah, you're going to interfere with any solar assets that are in the process because trees are going to grow, and they may, even if you put them anywhere within that 120 zone space. At certain times of the year and the light angles, you may cut into people's ability to generate current off of their rooftop assets. So, the issue, and also trees.
Mr. Bruce, you've, you've reached your allotted five minutes. I'm going to ask you to, if you can conclude. I don't want to cut you off. We have others that still want to speak.
Yes, yes, so I will do that. I will simply, one, barriers, make them absolute and permanent so that there is no question of that, not just the stub road. Number two, get proper managed, non-human use of that open space. And don't put trees in there. Put whatever the environmental engineer says to put in. Don't landscape it. Put in stuff that makes sense for proper wildlife management. And you won't have issues with, with shading on, on people's solar assets. Normally, you have problems with, you know, an unsightly jungle occurring because it will become a self-maintaining open space. Use the P E R T, use the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust as a model. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Next resident?
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Madam Brooke. So, I may try and have a conversation separately with Mr. Bruce in regard to, I mean, one of the problems we're having with our self-maintaining natural areas right now is the invasive vines, which is kind of messing up all of that and requiring some of our most natural areas to require control. One of the, the problems that I have, I, I want to thank you for putting the, the speaking where it belongs. And I'd like to ask you to always put the speaking where it belongs. It's not just in the wrong place, these people. It's in the wrong place for everyone. And if you're going to allow five minutes, allow two minutes to comment before you discuss an item, and then three minutes after you've discussed it and before you decide on any, you know, thing moving forward. But the, and I, and I understand you're not voting here, but the, the whole purpose of this is to understand what to recommend. My huge concern here is that these people have been to meeting after meeting after meeting, not unlike PREET, not unlike BET, not unlike so many developments. And to some degree, that becomes a tactic. We call it death by meeting. It even has a name. So, what we need to do is, we need to say, if we're going to meet with the developer and come up with some certain things, they should be, you know, written down. Here's what we kind of came to. And then you go to your next meeting, you want to see those things reflected. I mean, we're at something like the sixth or seventh meeting, and I think Mr. Colagreco said something along the lines that he wasn't quite sure, you know, what their feelings were about the trail. I mean, I, I listened to person after person after person. I don't think anybody could be unclear what the residents think about the trail. And the tree line has also been very, very consistent. As Mr. Vandergrift said, you know, they've been deciding something, and then somebody else comes and turns it around. It's not the residents. And, you know, the, the importance of having the residents heard in this township is enormous. We do not have that now.
Ms. Lehman, that's actually what we've been doing for the last hour and 15 minutes, is listening to the residents. So, I, I, we've listened to everyone who wanted to come out tonight to speak their mind, and we've been very clear.
Mr. Hager, I have my comments. May I have my comments without, I get interruptions every time I speak.
Well, when you say something that's patently false, I'm going to correct the record. We're in the middle of a meeting where residents have come out to express their concerns so that this can be said.
You have absolutely no right to interrupt my comments by sunshine law.
Okay. Please continue. You have a minute and 40 seconds.
Decide what's false and what's not false. If you want to get into that, I have an entire list of things that you can explain. And I hope I get my time back from the time that you interrupted me. This is not okay for you to do that or for you to decide what's false. Being heard doesn't have to do with allowing people to speak. Being heard means that you reflect what you heard in your next action. And in this particular case, for Mr. Colagreco to come here and, and suggest that he's not quite sure whether anybody wants, I, I forget what it was, a path or, or benches or whatever it was, the tree. was, the tree, where the trees were, whatever it was, there's nobody here who should be in any doubt after having been to those meetings, and I've been to most of them. I think I missed one or two. And those meetings should have been filmed. If they were filmed, the planning commission could watch them, and then they would know what the residents wanted. So it was also a very valid point that was made, that the planning commission comes in fresh, and it's a brand-new slate, you just erased the Etch A Sketch. I like that symbolism there. So, you know, we need to understand, Mr. Hecker, what hearing the residents is about, not just sitting there and listening. And the changing, when you have an enormous ordinance like that and you change something to the next one, a summary of the changes should be provided. In fact, a very succinct summary of the main points should be provided, not the executive summary that we see, that's inadequate. But a good summary should be provided that has the main points, including the walking trail and the line of trees and whether, you know, there's going to be this and that. And then from the summary, you can see the main changes.
Ms. Lehman, I've extended your time. I thank you for your comments this evening.
Finish the sentence, please.
Commissioner Zappone, before we take the last public comment, yes?
I just want to make a comment. From what we've seen, Commissioner Rothman has been working with his residents. I mean, it's quite apparent, and he's working to get a resolution of the issues concerning this project. So I don't understand what the speaker's talking about. I think he's doing an outstanding job in meeting with his residents and getting a resolution of the problem. I mean, what more can you ask of him?
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner Zappone. I think we have one last public comment.
Ross A., you're unneeded.
Hi, Ross A., Woodup Lane Avenue. So I'm definitely not one of the residents immediately abutting this project, but as someone who fights through fairly often this area, I just wanted to say that even if there was a public use path, which generally I think these probably are always going to be good for a lot of residents, just to have space to get out, especially if there is some natural area to get to. But I just wanted to say that the, if there was a public use path, it could also be set back closer to the actual residences versus immediately abutting the existing homeowners. So I just want to say that.
Thank you, sir. I believe that is the end of public comment, unless there's, Grace, am I correct about that? Okay, thank you. So given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to ask that if there are any comments or questions from commissioners, that they focus on the matter's next step at hand and that we not get into the weeds of land development and whatnot tonight because we're not, we're not there yet. So I'm going to open it up to see if there are any brief comments or questions from my fellow commissioners.
So what is, what is the next step?
Well, if there is agreement, the next step would be to move forward to putting this on to the regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners to vote, to advertise for a hearing, for a public hearing on the text and map amendments.
And in listening to residents' concerns, I guess the question is, the text amendment as proposed, that would be advertised, does it take into account what the residents that came today, what their concerns are?
I believe so, but I would defer to Commissioner Rothman and the others who are involved.
I mean, I think that the vehicle by which the Toll Brothers has come to us, they have drawings that are just representative of what they're suggesting. The comments made by counsel, Mr. Caligreco, and I believe our solicitor would back me on this, there is nothing binding in what they're asking us to advertise and then vote for that would, to Mr. Tobin's comments, force anybody in this room or at Toll Brothers to do what the residents are talking about tonight. That's part of the land development. But what, the vehicle by which they're trying to get us to enable the zoning text amendment to go forward, which would then allow them to come to us again with the land development process whereby we have heard from the residents what we'd want to.
For sure.
Stick to is the next, after that.
If I may, I mean, as I understand the residents' concern, a lot of this, to me, is really, is land development.
Yep.
And it's not going to be in the text amendment. But I guess, so now my question is, the text amendment as proposed, does it give the board the leeway, you know, we allow density, we allow setbacks, for example, and then the rest of it, we deal in land development?
I think that's right. I'll defer to Solicitor Clark on that question.
So I think in a lot of ways, the text amendment, if it can be viewed as simply as possible, the text amendment is going to be able to allow them to use this property for this type of development with this approximate density, with this approximate layout. But the very specifics of the project will have to be through the land development process, where they will come in with a fully engineered plan that will be reviewed by Mr. Hassan and his office, or reviewed by internally, and will also be reviewed by my office. So a lot of the concerns that were expressed tonight by the residents are more properly going to be addressed during the land development phase of this. But this will allow them to use the property consistent with what they are proposing.
Okay. Vice President Beatty?
Clarify a question to Solicitor. There's nothing in this draft ordinance that would require a walking trail, nothing in the ordinance that would require certain setbacks. Like, there's everything that the planning commission said that the residents are unhappy with, nothing in the text as written that we move forward to a hearing is not required in the draft.
The text amendment will have, you are essentially correct. The text amendment will have certain dimensional aspects to it about how the density and things along those lines, but everything else will just go through the land development process, which will be contained in all of our, the other ordinances that are within the township.
Thank you.
The one, the one decision the board will have to make, though, and will need some direction on, is the planning commission, and Mr. Caligreco can speak to this if he'd like, the planning commission suggested that perhaps this should not be a separate district, that this should be merged with the S N R. The planning commission was expressing some concerns about this possibly being spot zoning, and so they wanted it merged with the S N R. The S N R, if that is what the board were to decide to do, and my office is not recommending that you do that. But if you merge it with the S N R, then we're going to need to make certain changes to the S N R, and then we're going to have to do this as an overlay and not as a, and not as a, as a text amendment. I understand what the planning commission might have been saying from what we heard from the meetings. I understand the recommendations that were being made. We don't believe this is spot zoning. We believe this can be done as a separate text amendment, just dealing with this parcel.
I think on matters of the law, we will follow your recommendation.
Can you explain what all that means to the people?
You mean the different districts?
Scott, is it S N R? We don't, most of the time we know what that is.
So.
The S N R is.
No way to find that stuff out.
The S N R is just another district located in the township that deals with this type of use. And what the planning commission was saying is that instead of creating a separate district at the St. Basil's property, a separate and new district at the St. Basil's property, we should just call this S N R, just an extension of the S N R. When you're saying S N R, it has the same as if you're saying something as single-family residential, or commercial, or light industrial. It's just a different designation for a different type of use. So the S N R is one type of use located in the township, and the planning commission thought this district should be, or this parcel should be merged into the S N R. We don't, we don't believe that's necessary. Spot zoning is when you take one piece of property and you treat it completely differently from all of the other surrounding properties, either for the economic benefit or the economic detriment of the property owner. Spot zoning is illegal in Pennsylvania. You can't just take one property and treat it completely differently from everything that's surrounding it. We do not believe this is, we do not believe this meets the definition of spot zoning.
So the property doesn't then become zone residential?
It does.
Should it have to be residential before they do it?
Yes, and that's what they're doing.
So then, so then that disqualifies them from continuing to put the threat of the nursing home, because that gets moved in at every meeting. So I'm against all of this unless, you know, somebody's got to put their foot down and say what they're going to do, and that doesn't happen at any meeting. Everyone's going to vote on this and say?
I think technically.
Yeah, we're going to let you come to the floor. If you just, yeah, if you've got identified, yeah.
That's the struggle with all these meetings, is people that, we just blue collar people. We don't understand half the stuff. There's no way to find this information out. And I brought that question up to Drew over the phone before the first meeting. If they're going to, if they're going to, if you're going to bring a dog to the fight, you should have to say what you're going to do. What stops them from saying after it's changed, well, we want to do this? That was my question, which no one ever answered. So my, my point is, if you're going to turn it into residential housing, then everybody else that lives in the township has to come and have their, you know, they have to put their, put their stuff out there and say what they're going to do, and then you guys decide whether or not you can. Why is it that that company can say, well, we might do this, or we might do this? I view that as a threat. You know, they keep throwing that other thing in there that nobody wants, and it's put in there, I feel like, as a backdoor threat. So before anything moves forward, shouldn't they have to change, if they want to put those houses in, shouldn't they have to change the zoning?
Yes.
Just like anybody else would have to do?
That's what's being done now.
Okay.
That's what they're asking for?
It's being contemplated now.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand, because I keep hearing overlay and this and that. What I'm saying is if I want to turn a property that's commercial into a residential property, I got to spend that money, come to you guys and say, hey, and if it fails, it fails, right?
That's what they're doing.
That's, that's my point. That's, that's the question.
That's what they're doing. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? So then I think the general idea, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Man Freddie, is that this would come forward at the October board meeting as an agenda item, as a motion to advertise a public hearing in November for this text and map amendment that has been requested.
That is correct, and you will either approve the advertisement or you will reject it.
So I just want to clarify that for the residents that are here. So the way that this works is that when you change the zoning code, you actually have to advertise that you're holding a public hearing for the purposes of considering a proposal to change the zoning code. And so at next month's meeting, the agenda item will be whether or not we vote to authorize advertisement of a public hearing in November where the substance of the proposal would be considered. So next month's meeting would simply be a vote, are we going to allow the advertisement to inform the public that we intend to hold a public hearing in November for the purposes of considering the text and map amendment that are before us now? And if you have any further questions, we'll be, we'll be happy to answer those as things move forward. I just want to thank you all again for taking the time to come out to express your concerns this evening. This is helpful to the board, that we can hear with clarity and unanimity the things that you're worried about so that they can be addressed. And I know Commissioner Rothman will continue to be in touch with you, but thank you again for staying for this extended period of time. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.